Welcome, everybody. It's our first summer meeting, and there's more people than I was expecting, so I'm happy to see that. It is June 24th, 2024. We are a little late because HR ran over, but it's 6:30. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call and the prayer? And then Ms. Prin, will you lead us in the pledge?
So Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Prin.
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Ms. Darling.
Here.
Ms. Gilio.
Here.
I'm here. And Ms. Raymond. And student rep, Mears.
Here.
And we also have Dr. Andreid, Mr. Poska, Mr. Donovan, and that's it. And let me find the prayer here. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
At my reading, the Aye of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we don't have any presentations tonight, so we can jump right into looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I won't.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prin. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Any items removed? Communications? We are up to our first public comment, period. Mr. Johnson, this is now your new role, if you're okay with it.
Nope.
No, no? Okay. Wow. I feel objected, kind of.
I even put them up early. I remembered.
Okay, so this brings us up to our superintendent's comments. Dr. Andreid, I will hand the floor over to you.
Thank you. I want to congratulate the -- congratulations to the class of 2024 from both Nashua High School North and Nashua High School South. In total, there was 681 graduates. Among those graduates, 65% are attending college. Of that, 65%, 18% are attending a two-year college, which speaks to the value of our CTE programs, because two-year colleges like Nashua Community College focus on more of the technical crafts and careers. 26% are seeking employment opportunities or continuing employment opportunities. 2.5% are pursuing military, and 6% remain undecided. I'm proud of our graduates, and I applaud their families for their support of our graduates. Cheers to our teachers from pre-K through high school for helping to make this happen. You all had a hand in our student success in school and with each of those final diploma presentations. So thank you, and good luck to all of our graduates. I also want to publicly thank Stacy Heinz, who does the research and all my superintendent's comments. This is her last recommendations, kind of going forward. And each month, she always finds a tidbit of information really to celebrate the success of our district. So sincerely going to miss Stacy and her insights and her perspectives, and really how proud she is of the district and always, again, holding us to high expectations and sharing our student successes. So thank you, Stacy. We will miss you. And again, congratulations to the class of 2024.
Board member response to the superintendent's comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Lampier. Would you like that?
Oh, sure. So, yes, the graduations were amazing. They're long, but I know that next year, when it comes time, I'll be there again, because it just to see all the kids' smiling faces means so much to all of us, really. And it is going to be sad this year to miss Stacy and Dan. They've both done so much for the district, and, you know, we definitely appreciate it.
Darling.
Bringing kind of already said it all. I want to echo the pride that we all have in the students that, you know, made it to the end. And I spend a lot of time thinking about just everything our kids have gone through in the last few years, and it makes it even more impressive to me to know how many are still thriving and succeeding, and just warms my heart. So thank you.
Raymond.
Thank you. Yeah, several of us also had the opportunity to go to the Brentwood Academy graduation, which is our -- excuse me, our alternative high school. And that one was particularly moving, because it's only a few kids, and these are kids who have overcome really overwhelming obstacles to achieve their graduation. And so I really appreciate being allowed to participate in that and seeing everybody and celebrating their successes. And then, do we have a candidate for communications director? I didn't hear it on HR today.
Not yet, but we have 20 applicants.
Oh, that's really exciting. Okay.
Gilio.
Being at three graduations within a day and a half warmed my heart delightfully. It's like the happiest part of the year for me, because we work hard, but the students work hard, and the staff works hard, and it's nice to be part of that culmination. Congratulations to her.
Mr. Claffey.
No comment.
Daniels-Williams.
I want to say how proud I am as well of the 2024 graduating class. I hope that they all walk out there expecting the glitter like 24-karat gold. That is from one of the speeches that were given at the North graduating class. I just am so very thankful to be able to see these kids graduate, because they didn't get eighth-grade graduations, because they were the COVID class. So I am so thankful for all of them. Thank you so much for the teachers and everyone that put in all the extra work to get them through those years. So thank you.
Prin.
I got to go to my first high school graduation here in Nashua, and I was very, very moved to see the kids and how excited and happy they were, just so very proud of all that they've accomplished. I didn't even comprehend the fact that these kids started high school on Zoom. So they've overcome a lot, and I was very proud and happy to be a part of their day.
Johnson.
Yeah, both graduations, the North and South, were incredible. The kids are amazing. I coached so many kids in Nashua from when -- so seeing all these kids I coached when they were five, and now like, you know, Coach, bam, graduating. So exciting to see. Also, a big shout out to those kids who are going into the military. It was great to see them with their sashes representing where they were going, and I wish them all the best. And also to the production. I watched the video, and they did a tremendous job with the production of the graduations. So it's great to relive those memories, seeing that on the ETV.
Yeah, I also want to echo the graduating class of 2024 and just how hard it must have been to start out, how they started out, and then ending up. I mean, there were smiles. I think every single -- maybe not every single, but every single kid from South acknowledged all of us sitting there and said hi. North was boisterous and fun, and holy smokes, do they both have their own styles. But I love being there, and I love seeing it all, and it really -- I mean, that's what we're here for, is so that kids grow up into young adults that they're proud of. And we saw lines after lines after lines of proud, proud young adults. So, good job, guys. Teachers did good, administration did good, parents did good, and students worked incredibly hard, so.
Best part of the year, right? So this brings us up to student member. See, there's no fighting tonight.
I'd first like to wish everyone in the class of 2024, congrats for graduating, and good luck wherever you're going to go, whether you're going to go to college, where you're going to go into the military, if you're going to go right into the workforce. Congrats, and I hope you do very well wherever you go. Registration for fall sports is going to be -- is open. It opened two weeks ago, so get your spot while you can. First day for all fall sports, with the exception of football, is going to be Monday, August 19th, and football starts the Friday before the 16th. If you took an AP exam in the last year, those scores will be available July 8th, which is two weeks from today, and it is a little bit later than past years, which I'm a little bit upset about, but that's how it works. That's just how the cookie crumbles sometimes. And as of the last day of school, there were still eight spots for drivers at its South for quarter one of the 2024 school year. So a lot of spots. I don't know how many have filled up since then, so find out if you still want to do that. But by September 16th, you must be 15 years and nine months, so just note that. And everyone, have a good summer.
Gil. If you guys are okay with it, I'd like to bump HR first on the list, just rearrange the agenda. Is that okay with you guys? Contensive? Okay. But we also need to go into a non-public in regards to HR. So we'll go into a non-public right now, and then deal with what we need to deal with, and then come back in and do the full HR agenda.
So it is C or A? B. B? Okay. I move that we go into non-public under RSA 91A32B.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Has to be a roll call.
A roll call, sorry. That's why I was --
Ms. Lampier has to like flip to the other part of the book. It's a pain.
I know.
Here we go. Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Prin.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels-Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Claffey.
Yes.
Ms. Darling.
Yes.
Ms. Gilio.
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Okay. So --
We are now in non-public. It is -- The first one.
So moved. So who made the motion? Ms. Gilio?
I seconded.
Okay.
And it's -- Tonight is all group effort.
Okay. Under RSA 91A331, or aye. Okay. Another roll call vote. Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Prin.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels-Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Claffey.
What do we vote on now? I'm kidding, yeah.
Ms. Darling.
Yes.
Ms. Gilio.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to seal passed. And now, we don't need a motion to adjourn, because it's not --
Nope. So I am going to go into Committee on Finance and Operations, so Ms. -- Oh, I apologize. Yes, back to regular Human Resources. Ms. Gilio, the floor is yours. Sorry about that.
Okay. I'm looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are we going too quickly? Do you need a minute?
No, I found it.
Only to leave non-public sealed minutes, but we're also going out of order, so Ms. Lampier is --
So that was Ms. Raymond and Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Okay. Don't just say anything that's not just -- let's go -- let's stay with the motions the rest of the meeting, and I'll be okay.
I can't guarantee it.
But we need to vote on it.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the guidance counselor slash --
I think that's a typo.
Yeah, it's a typo error. I'm sorry. I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the athletic trainer job description.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Raymond made the motion, and Ms. Gilio seconded.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. So all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the personnel recommendations of June 24th, 2024.
I'm moved.
Second.
Raymond, thank you, Ms. Gilio. Any comments or questions in regards to the personnel recommendations?
Just, and I said it at HR, I think Mr. Baus and the administrative teams at each of the schools are moving right along at making sure that we're getting the teachers that we need for all the classes that we have for the fall. So kudos to all.
Very busy time of year for them to get all the teachers up and going. Very much appreciate it. So any other comments or questions about the personnel recommendations? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations of June 24th, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Looking for a recommendation to elect Alyssa Murphy to the district-wide position of ELL Coordinator, grades six to 12, for the 2024-25 school year at an annual salary of $75,382.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Ms. Prin. Any comments or questions? We met with her earlier. She -- oh, no, we didn't meet with her. Sorry, never mind.
No, she's coming from Florida.
She's coming from Florida.
But we will meet with her in the future.
Yes.
Mr. Choppa spoke highly of her earlier.
They are having a phone meeting tomorrow. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm looking for a recommendation to elect Erin Putnam to the district-wide position of ELL Coordinator, grades K to eight, for the 2024-25 school year at an annual salary of $73,544.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Comments or questions?
We did meet her.
We did meet her.
And she's an internal candidate. She's fabulous.
Fantastic. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I'm looking for a recommendation to elect Sarah Jean Phillips to the position of Assistant Principal at Penachuck Middle School for the 2024-25 school year, excuse me, at an annual salary of $88,100.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Ms. Prin. Comments or questions? Mr. Claffey.
So this candidate has no teaching experience. We've -- is that -- can I -- Did I commit a crime just now? Because I --
No.
But her back -- yeah, her background is as a counselor.
Yes, so.
But she's currently an administrator in another district.
Can I ask that question that I just answered?
Yes, although typically, we do it in non-public in HR. Because until a position is approved, the resumes are confidential.
Well, what's the consequence for -- should I leave? Should I resign? Because I really --
You're banishing.
You have detention. You have to stay longer.
Yeah, and we --
I certainly don't want to compromise. I just --
Dr. Andreid spoke quite a bit about her experience at the process during HR. I don't know if you were here for that.
I guess, well, if I had thought before I opened my big mouth, I would have said I've looked at the candidate's resume. And I have concerns about that. Can I say that?
Absolutely. And again, I think those concerns were raised in the nomination. They were, you know, I met with the building principal, the assistant building principal, on, again, how this candidate would fill out the team, and again, the strengths and weaknesses of that. We also heard loud and clear from the interview team that was a concern as well. But after I met with her, I think she's going to be a great addition to the team and something that we can overcome. But again, a lot more strengths that will, again, I think, lead to this positive school culture there and also provide, I still think, great feedback to our educators that will improve teaching and learning.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, finally, I'm looking for a recommendation to elect Crystal DeGray to the position of Chief Operating Officer at an annual salary of $125,000 effective July 1, 2024.
I'm moved. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Ms. Prin. Comments or questions? Has been working with us for many, many, many months now, and I think is ready to jump into the main slot, so we're excited to continue to have her and see how much of Dan stays in the district with her knowledge, so. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. So we will go back in order, back up to Finance and Operations.
Just, can I just have just a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. I'm going to make a motion to purchase 1,000 Chromebooks from IT Insiders in an amount not to exceed $238,000. The funding is to come from 91.1.91222571221. How many? 1,000. How many students do we have?
9,750.
How many do we have that are getting Chromebooks? I think these ones are all for the sixth graders, right?
Well, we're putting in place the one-to-one, so every sixth grader gets a new one, every ninth grader gets a new one. You keep it for -- sixth grader, you keep it for two, three years, then you turn it in, then ninth, you get a new one, you keep it until. Then we also have the Chromebooks that are in the elementary classrooms. There, those students will not be bringing them back and forth. So the number of Chromebooks that we need is fairly significant to keep this process going.
How many did we get back this year?
Don't know that yet. Good question for Mr. Rodriguez. In about a month. You know, he did speak to that in Finance and Ops and said that they're coming in, they're taking that inventory now.
Before we go any further, I just need a second on my motion.
A second.
Send people.
Who said it first?
Someone down there.
Okay, thank you.
Take credit.
I apologize for my interruption. I just got taken a little bit by surprise, especially because I know several kids who've gone through three to five in one year. So it just feels -- I don't know what the solution is, but it just feels like a money pit to me.
Can I add something?
Daniels-Williams.
So we also bought another 1,000 for McCarthy. So we're buying 2,000. We're trying to stay on top of it. In the meeting, the IT guy said that most of them come back damaged, and this is something we will have to do year after year, year after year.
But we're saving money by having our textbooks on the Chromebooks, right? And we're saving kids' backs by having that. So, I mean, there is a positive trade-off somewhere.
Yes, and just the other aspect of, for years, like, you might not got, received the same Chromebook, like, from the previous year. So the student will be assigned one Chromebook for the three years. So if a student's damaging five, we know it's that particular student. So there's going to be a lot more accountability moving forward, more ownership, and again, I think, changing the culture of why kids are damaging Chromebooks. Again, we're actually a district that's far behind being one-to-one at the secondary, like, 10 years behind on this. Again, we have multiple conversations with superintendents. There's going to be damage loss every year, no matter what. Like, Chromebooks are going to break. There's going to be, you know, I'm going to close my Chromebook with my pen in the air. Like, things just kind of happen. Keyboards are going to fall apart. Things can be repaired. But again, I think there is going to be a savings on the long term. Again, we look at digital equity and, again, access and opportunity. So this is something that the district should be moving forward, and what is the impact on teaching and learning? So I would expect damage every year, just normal wear and tear. But to Mr. Donovan's point, the plan is every sixth grader and ninth grader will receive a new device, and they would have it for the three years or the four years, and then they would get another device going into the next grade. And then, speaking with Mr. Rodriguez, a lot of the Chromebooks we bought are pre-COVID, like, so they're actually starting to age out. So we are looking at, in that technology plan, what's our budget and how do we support our infrastructure and sustain that funding source for years to come, so we don't have huge numbers every year.
Okay, I mean, I definitely expected there to be a lot because of the new middle school opening. Just the idea of it being one-ninth of the number of kids that we serve, just a little jarring. But, I mean, I say that about a lot of the number that we talk about, so.
I just, I remember when we finally got the Chromebook availability to us because of COVID, and it was like, this is such a shift in practice after years of, no, we don't need it, we don't need it, we don't need it. Now we have, and it's like, I don't know how we survived without them to begin with. So it was a long time coming to this, you know, 21st century ideal in our school system. Ms. Raymond? Thank you. I just, I think that, first of all, all the other districts have been doing this for a long time, as Dr. Andreid said. But also, one of the things that I noticed as my kids were coming up through elementary and into middle school pre-COVID, when we were still, like, the only district using textbooks, our kids were using textbooks that still had George Bush as president. Like, they were really, really out of date. And I think that the curriculum in general for education has moved online so that it's updating constantly, especially in science and language. You know, I think, I remember my second year here on the board, the language teacher saying, we don't want new books, because they're, like, the language is changing as there's new technology. We would rather have subscription things. So it's a, I don't think it's less expensive, but I think it prepares our kids better for what they're going to experience in life, and that's kind of what our mandate is under the Constitution, is to give them an adequate education so that they can be productive members of society. But do we think it'll be about 1,000 a year, or do you think it will vary?
Yeah, it's be right around 1,000, just sixth grade and ninth grade. Yep.
And then replacing the other elementary as they --
Johnson?
Also, from personal experience, I've noticed that the Chromebooks help with students with their IEPs, because it's easier to implement on, you know, through their Google Classroom and to make sure those IEPs are met. And I think we've seen that evolution while we go over to the Chromebooks, that more of the kids who are on IEPs, you know, get more of what they need, because that's more readily available and easier to access.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of the 1,000 Chromebooks from IT Insiders in an amount not to exceed $238,000, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of an audio/video display for the central office conference room at a cost of eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents from Pro AV Systems account ninety-one point one point zero one two three two zero seven one two two one.
Second.
Is this going to replace the screen that blocks the whole, like, half of the room?
Yes, it will.
You know, I have expected when I walk in there, remember the ones that we used to do math on and the projectors? I mean, that's where, that's where your office is at, you're still at projector level of. Exciting.
Well, I mean, you can't, like, you can't walk around the table, you're, everyone, God forbid there's a fire, you know?
Anyway. Motion's been made, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome to the twentieth century. So exciting.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of upgrades to five cores, which is the district's networking infrastructure from Inter Systems Incorporated in an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. This is fiscal year twenty twenty-five and account ninety-one point one point nine nine two 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 five five three six two eight.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I just want to, in case you're wondering, Mr. Rodriguez explained that other districts have already upgraded their systems and this is trying to get the other schools up to where they are.
And Mr. Rodriguez has explained to us before what switches are and I never remember except that they're integral to accessing the internet, so.
Don't need to know everything, other people can be experts in something and I'm fine with not knowing anything about technology. I would prefer that projector. Okay, no other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Don't feel rushed, I always feel like you're rushing when, when we're doing this. We're perfectly fine going at a pace that is appropriate.
I rush and I'm not here too.
Okay, so I want to make a motion to approve the purchase of an upgraded firewall from Inter Systems, Inc. in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. This is from fiscal year twenty twenty-five and it is account ninety-one point one point nine nine two 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 five five three six two eight.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of the upgraded firewall, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the occupational therapy and physical therapy contracts from Clark Associates, which is ninety, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and three hundred and five, I'm sorry, nine hundred and thirty-seven, three hundred and five dollars and ABC Physical Therapy, which is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, using fiscal year twenty-five budgeted funds. Account ninety-one point one point zero two two one six zero five three six one four.
Second.
Comments or questions, Ms. Raymond?
This is for our special education students, is it district-wide or is this at like a particular schools?
Should be district-wide.
Thank you.
And just, these are musts.
Right.
I was going to ask, I'm sorry, did you get the C E O? I'm sorry, no.
Sorry. I should.
Yes, now, we've worked with this group for a long time and recently, there's a, a new federal law potentially coming into place that would make it more difficult to hire part-time people to do some of these things, so by using an agency, get that much better, but the, a lot of these, these OTs and PTs are an integral part of specific schools, so.
Any other comments or questions? I feel like no, I'm just irritating Mr. Clappy over here.
I was going to apologize, but not now.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with the Adult Learning Center in Clearway High School for six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars with fiscal year twenty-five budgeted funds, accounts ninety-one point one point zero two one two six seven five five six nine four, three hundred and twelve thousand and account ninety-one point one point nine nine one 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 zero five three six zero zero for three hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Second that motion.
Thank you.
Comments or questions, Ms. Raymond?
I'm just curious, how many students we had at Clearway last year? I know that there, we have a number of like spots that they hold for us, but do we know, are we using up all those spots? Or not?
We're not using all those spots. The, the numbers change, students come and go.
Okay, so it's not like once you're there, you're there, you can come back?
Come back sometimes if doesn't work out for you there, you come back whether you want to or not. So, but, I mean, in, in, in May, we only had about forty slots filled of the sixty-five for typical students. And then we had seven of the ten for special ed.
Do we ever max it out?
Not in years, we have it in years.
Daniels Williams?
So, I know that we need to do this for this year, I wanted to know when would it be appropriate to talk about this program and how it integrates into our district? Because, you know, I have some concerns about that, so I just wanted to know when it was appropriate. I totally agree with this year because they need it and, you know, I, I totally agree with that, being, listening to the finances, you know, but I just wanted to know when would it be appropriate to talk about this for next year?
Like continuing the school, is that what you mean?
My understanding is it's run by adult education, which is separate from us, but we fully support it. So I wanted to see how that works for next year because we're not filling the spots, like if we can ask for partners, if we get, you know, I thought about it a lot since the finance and operations and I know that there's a couple different things, like, like I have a lot to say about it, I don't know if this is the time, so that's what I'm asking. Like, is now the time to talk about it because this right here has been approved for this year?
Once, once we vote on it, well.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can vet out your conversation, maybe with the admin team and then if it looks like it's something that we need to bring back to the full board in regards to making shifts or changes, we can. But I think you can sit down with these guys whenever you want and have a conversation about what, how you feel that the efficacy is or, you know, student enrollment, what happens when we don't have enough numbers? What are we doing with, with probably those funds, I'm guessing is part of your question, so. I would, I would definitely reach out and just have a conversation with them first.
Thank you for the answer. Second the motion.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the contract with the Adult Learning Center for Clearway High School, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the purchase of a range and steamer at Main Dunstable and a steamer at Birch Hill for a total of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. The funding is to come from Food Service Special Reserve Fund, account ninety-one point two one zero zero point nine nine two five six zero seven one eight zero zero.
Oh, second.
As a former May Downspool student, what is a range and streamer?
I guess a range is a stove top.
Was it for like the kitchen?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I have a follow-up question. If we're, we redid the kitchen in Birch Hill as part of the rehab, is there a reason that the steamer wasn't purchased in, with that funding? Or that?
It wasn't budgeted in the construction project. As you'll find out later, there's some excess funds, we need to do a spend-down in the food service account and I'll talk more about that when we talk about the contract, but it made sense to do it this way.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Getting hot in here. Anyway, I have more fun than you guys do. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I'm going to make, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four May transfer report.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the fiscal year twenty-four May transfer report, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now we are onto Ms. Raymond's Committee on Policy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we had to cancel our policy meeting last week, but we meet again July sixteen, so we will bring the June things to the July meeting and then I know Mr. Miro, Mira was saying that they have, they're still working on getting us the dress code policy, so I don't know if that will be in July or if it'll be in August, but we're getting there. So I know the students worked really hard on it, we just need a copy of it. So if anyone has a copy of it, I would love it, thank you.
It's lost.
True as well, remember if we don't document it, it didn't happen.
Right?
Every day.
Oh, my goodness, that's social work one-on-one. Okay, so we do have a bunch of policies for second reading, which means they're ready to be voted on this evening. The first one is, I'll just make the motion, I move to approve J J J A Student Co-Curricular Activity Eligibility Academic Expectations.
Second.
So this policy, we just updated like a few months ago or a year ago. But then as our athletic director and the middle school teams were looking at it, we realized that we had only aligned the academic eligibility with the high school terms, high school quarters. So we needed to add language in to align it to the trimesters that middle school has. That's it.
Any other comments or questions? Did we get a first and a second on that? I apologize. That was Ms. Raymond and Ms. Gillio?
Yeah.
Okay. So all of those in favor of approving the co-curricular activity eligibility, say yah.
Aye.
J J A, yah.
All right.
That was horrible.
All right, I'm just going to move on. I move that we approve policy A C E Annual Notice of Contact Information for Human Rights Officer, Title IX Coordinator, Five-O-Four Coordinator and Civil Rights Agencies. This is a policy that we update every single year because it includes people's names and contact information and those can change from year to year.
Is the contact information, like, does their, do their names need to be in there or can it just be?
Yes.
Signed to a phone number?
No, the, the law requires that we
The names are in there?
Their names are in there, by name with the correct extension, so.
You need a second, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, no, I didn't notice someone, I wasn't sure if I missed it. Oh, thank you.
No, I just kept talking, I didn't give her a chance.
So any comments or questions in regards to A C dash E? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move that we approve policy E E A, Pupil Transportation Services.
Second.
This is a tiny change, we have been providing transportation to kindergarteners for as long as we have had full-day kindergarten, but our policy says we don't have to till first grade. The policy committee and the transportation director feel like kindergarten is a good time to start.
Okay, so any comments or questions? None, all those in favor of approving policy E E A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move that we approve policy G B C D, Background Investigation and Criminal Background, criminal, I'm sorry, I messed it up. Background Investigation and Criminal Records Check.
Second.
Carling seconded. Any comments or questions?
This is a legal update, the state law changed this year to change who reviews the criminal background checks of bus drivers and bus monitors. And it also allows superintendents to now designate another person within administration to review these because superintendents across the state have been buried, especially in large districts like
Yeah.
Manchester and Nashua and Rochester and Concord. I mean, I, I don't know how many hours a week Dr. Andre devotes to this, but now he can share it with other people in central office who have the appropriate background to do it. So I recommend that we approve it.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving G B C D, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I have two to rescind, I move that we rescind E B B B R Attachment Bureau of Emergency Medical Services. I mean, I know, well, I'll wait for a second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gillio.
It sounds like a weird thing to rescind, but it is in fact just a, like flyer that is posted with the automatic external defibrillator machine and it doesn't need to be a policy because if someone's in distress, they're going to look at the machine, not take time to go online and look up the policy.
One of those times you really want them to say sorry, not ask for permission.
Right?
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of rescinding policy E B B B dash R, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move that we rescind policy twenty-two ten point one Advertising in Curriculum and School Publications.
I have a second. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I got.
So we actually, this is a very old policy, it's been around since two thousand and five. And so we combed all of our other policies and we found that almost everything that's listed in here is in other places in more appropriate places, so there's guidelines covering what can go in the yearbook where one would look about yearbooks, there's guidelines about other types of things and community relations, there's guidelines in some of the fiscal policies. So this is really redundant.
I love getting rid of redundancy. Favorite. Any other comments or questions about this? Being none, all those in favor of rescinding policy two-two-one zero point one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I just have one other thing, policy I L was included in the packet. But it wasn't included on the agenda and I'm not sure why that is. So we can, since it's not on the agenda, I would say let's just hold it and we'll put it on the agenda next month.
Is it, is that okay, that we can hold off on that one? Okay.
I don't think it's something that, it's evaluation of instructional programs and it basically talks about the superintendent providing us updates timely about curriculum, which we do through the curriculum committee, so. Want curriculum to look at it before it comes here? I don't know, I don't remember.
I think one of the things we talked about is that the policy, as it was written, does not accurately reflect the practice we put into place. I think from time to time, we do bring presentations and curriculum pieces forward to the full, full committee so that they can be updated on different things that are going on within the district, so I think this more accurately reflects that as opposed to how the policy was previously written.
So I guess at this point, I don't know if. So I guess at this point, I don't know if curriculum wants to look at it and then have us bring it back. Or if we just put it on for July. I'm neutral on that and we can decide off. It's our clock, isn't it?
Yeah, you guys decide about it and figure out which one is going to go on.
Mr. Poska, do you have a gut right now about whether we need to look at it?
I don't think so. I think it's a practice that we're doing anyway. And I think we continue to bring these things forward to the committee. So I think if we could bring it back to the committee in July when we do our policy meeting, that makes the most sense.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just weird that it was in the packet, so. Well, that's all I got. We meet in July. We have a lot of finance policies that Mr. Donovan has been kind enough to review and write recommendations for before he leaves.
Right.
He already did it. I just had to cancel policy last week.
No, I know. I was just like, what a great swan song.
Right, because updating policies, everyone wants to do right before retirement.
Exactly. Okay, well, thank you for that. Did the unfinished business. We have new business and I will handle it.
So in new business, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve two Title IV 21st Century Community Learning Center grants for Birch Hill and Sunset Heights. They're in the amount of, at Birch Hill, it's $91,313.11. And at Sunset, it's $113,207.88. Special thanks to Ms. Archer, Tanya Tebow, and Erin Innocent and a number of community partners who put together the application. As you know, 21st Century program will provide before, after school, and summer care or programming for students who are some of the neediest throughout the community. So these are big dollar amounts. And again, I really want to thank the team for putting in the application. And I think it's really going to benefit Birch Hill and Sunset Heights students and their academic outcomes.
Gilio? I just have a quick question. What have they done so far before this was proposed? Have they had 21st Century ongoing?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is new money.
Okay, okay.
Over and above.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
I'll make the motion, but I would like to.
I'll second it.
Ask a question as well. Do you need the amount in the motion? Or can I just say I move to approve the two Title IV? So I move to approve the two Title IV 21st Century Community Learning Center grants for Birch Hill and Sunset Heights Elementary Schools.
Second.
Great, so my question is, as I was reading the memo from the Department of Education awarding the grant, it talks about the schools receiving an average score, but it doesn't say a score on what or what that means.
Just an average score. Whatever.
Like one of the schools got 68.33 and the other one got 70. On what? Out of what? What does it have to do with anything? No idea.
I don't have the information to answer that this evening.
Well, thank you to Ms. Archer, Ms. Anderson, and I think Ms. Tebow. So she goes, Ms. Tebow. And well done, all.
I have a question.
Ms. Lanfair?
So the 21st Century Community Learning Center, is that only for children living in that, those school districts? Or is it district-wide?
We only have 21st Century programs in five, five schools. So it's not district-wide. But. Don't hold me to it, but some students are often, this is for economy scale. We just can have it in all the elementary schools. So there might be programs that students come to.
Oh, so kids in other school districts have access to these programs too?
Other school programs, other elementary schools, not other districts.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you.
But I just want to verify that I'm pretty sure that happens.
If I could just, I mean, it's a competitive grant that comes out. So they give you, for example, we just finished the five-school grant, which was the five-title schools. That was one grant for five years for the five schools. It ended a year ago. Now, we started this year on $80,000 per school for those five schools. And that's like a three-year grant. This was a two-year, this was a five-year grant for just these two schools. And then they broke them out separately, different amounts, higher than the other five, but lower than they had given us the previous time. So a lot has to do with how many other districts reach out to try to get the funds and then how much, how much money they get from the federal government.
Raymond?
Is this going to impact how many students are able to participate in the program? Because I know when my kids were at Birch Hill, they didn't have 21st Century. They only had the Adult Learning Center program, which parents had to pay for. But 21st Century, you typically don't. But is this, does this impact like staffing or the number of students who cannot participate?
Between the two programs, between the Adult Learning Center and this, it should be able to manage most of the students that would like to use those services. They can charge a tuition. So students, they can request tuition. That fund, those funds are then put back into a special revenue fund. And that's used to help fund the program going forward.
Because it's, it's basically an after-school program, right? That stays so that when kids, for parents who are working or for kids who need extra help. Okay.
Yeah, but it's more, it's, there's a lot of research that goes into it. I think Ms. Archer came in and did a presentation on it, but.
Right.
We had it at Sunset Heights. I know Oliver, my son, went through it. We did have to pay. It was a very minimal cost, was not what the Adult Learning Center was per week. But they gave a lot of opportunities for kids to try new things. Like you got to try improv and really liked that. And that helped with this public speaking and being in class. And it's just, there are a lot of kind of embedded programs within the 21st Century. It's not like the Adult Learning Center where it's just kind of a babysitting opportunity. They do after-school homework help. And they do a lot of kind of tracking of successes. So we're able to show a lot of growth with the students by keeping these metrics. So it's neat. I think it's neat.
And I love grants. Grants don't raise taxes, so.
Only if you keep getting them, though. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the 21st Century grants for Birch Hill and Sunset Heights, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So next, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the Nashua Education Foundation's Spring 2024 Grants, totaling $26,954.11. And if I can just give a, for the people who don't have the memo, a little bit of the grant background. So we have a jewelry project at North in the amount of $2520. We have a literature of horror and unknown at South, and that's $400. Science of Reading Materials at New Searls for $460. Chalk Art at South for $460. Farm to School at South, $6,700. Learning to Read at North for $467. The EMS Book Club, that will turn into the MMS Book Club, that's $5,000. The PMS Book Club, $5,000. FMS Book Club, $5,000. Graphic Novels at Fairgrounds Middle School, $498. And Novel Effects at New Searls for $450. So just the other tidbit, since 2011, Nashua Ed Foundation has contributed more than $275,000 in grants to Nashua School Teachers for Classroom Projects. So thank you to the foundation for all the reference.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
I move to approve the Nashua Education Foundation's Spring 2024 Grants, totaling $26,954.11.
Second it.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
Can I just say a little anecdotal story? Joe Hill, who's Stephen King's son and who is a famous horror writer and has movies and shows on Netflix, came to Nashua earlier this year to do a reading with another author. And Ms. Paling went, the horror and literature teacher. And so she was talking to Joe Hill about Nashua's course. And it was just really neat to see, to have that like celebrity moment, but really see Nashua shine with someone on that level. So she's teaching some of his, some of his stories. And so we signed some things. And it was just, I was over there in the corner like having a celebrity moment. So anyways, well done to everybody on the list.
We may have run into Stephen King at the Sarasota Publix a couple of years ago.
That's awesome.
He's scary in Publix.
Since we're all name dropping, may I? I ran into Bill Parcells at the West Palm Beach Publix.
Did you tell him all about Nashua and the cool things that we're doing for us?
And that afternoon, I ran into, and I have a picture of myself with pro golfer, Tommy. British golfer, Tommy. I guess he's not that important, but I love my.
Fleetwood?
Tommy Fleetwood. So thank you, Ms. Creek, for all the wonderful service you do. And all the, I was asked to be a board member on her board. And all these requests are vetted. People email, review the requests. It's very democratic. So the requests don't get approved unless they're noble. Even Ms. Paling, who probably is the most well-equipped teacher to teach a movie about horror, that I personally know. She's like Elvira. No, if you're watching, Ms. Paling, you know.
She's lovely.
She's a one, she doesn't look like Elvira.
That's fine. That's fine. We're having, we're having a fun meeting. We haven't seen each other in a long time. We got a lot of fun to work out. Okay, so all those in.
Don't wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
All celebrities. I have a question. When do they do these things? Because my kid's going to Fairgrounds next year. And he would love the graphic novel thing. Is this something that they do like as an extracurricular? Or is that, I'm just curious as a parent?
From the idea of the book clubs, that's trying to be implemented in all the middle school ELA classes and on a more consistent basis. And Ms. Carey has a very vibrant program in the library at Fairgrounds. So she's continually adding to her collection.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah, I can't keep up with my child and his graphic novels. So that'd be perfect.
Mr. Johnson?
No, just to say, my child's favorite teacher was Sarah Palin because she took that horror and unknown class. And thanks to my wife's extensive horror collection of DVDs, we're able to lend out movies to her for it. And then I will just drop that I'm good friends with Raina Telgemeyer, who writes the Smile books. And so very excited about the graphic novels going into Fairgrounds.
Excellent.
Glad to get a name drop in.
Yeah, everyone, anyone else?
Adam Sandler at the Red Arrow.
I spent the night at Stephen King's daughter's house. She has a house in Maine. I grew up in Maine, so.
Aw. All right, guys, so everyone in favor of accepting the Nashua Education Foundation grants, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So next, I'm looking for recommendations to approve City of Nashua Resolution R-24-062. And this resolution is changing the purpose up to $273,774 of unexpended bond proceeds from the Franklin Street School Building Improvements Project to the School Building Safety Improvement Project.
I'll make that motion. I'll second. Okay, Ms. Raymond? Any comments or questions?
I just want to be clear. This is, so the Franklin Street project came in under budget by $200, almost $74,000. And so now we are going to reallocate that to the Security Vestibule project because that is turning out to be more expensive than we anticipated.
Yep. Right. Great.
It's.
Ms. Williams?
So is that something that we've already talked about? And?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so I'm aware.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving City of Nashua Resolution R-24062, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That means we're officially, officially done with Franklin Street. Yay.
Well, there better not be. It has a new roof.
So the next item is a recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding placement on the salary schedule. You have a copy of the MOU in your packet. Essentially, this MOU just provides more clarification for a teacher who may be a CTE teacher or, as we're noticing more frequently now, mid-career, professional change of professions and coming into the teaching profession. And so how do we place a student, a student, an educator on our placement? So we will be recognizing years of experience in the career field and counting that towards our salary placement on our teacher scale. So in the past, it's been notorious, or more in the CTE field. But again, as we're starting to hire more math teachers or science teachers or elementary teachers who are coming in who are former accountants or engineers. In the past, we placed them on step zero and step one, which is pringest, yes, right? It's, it's very difficult. So again, I just want to thank the NTU for working through this MOU so that we can recruit some teachers in and also still be respectful to the current teachers in our program. So I'm looking for your endorsement tonight. But it is to provide more clarification on how we place teachers on salary scale.
I'll make the motion, but I have a question, obviously.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. And I'll second it.
So I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding with the National Teachers Union regarding placement on the salary schedule. And so my question, I think this is fabulous. I think that it's, we have a teacher shortage. And I think that recognizing professional experience that is relevant to the classroom, that might not be classroom in the past, is exactly what we ought to be doing. Especially as we encourage people to come to us to teach things like automotive. How do you get classroom experience teaching automotive until you've done it? But if you've been a mechanic for 30 years, you probably know your way around an engine, right? So I think it makes sense. My question is, how does this impact our current faculty? So if we have individuals in the CTE, for example, who were a professional chef and then came to become a teacher, are they, is there a system by which they can apply to have their step reconsidered?
So this MOU actually addresses that. So it's moving forward. So again, we worked with the NTU over the course of probably the last year. We've made some salary adjustments this year that teaches, that may be impacted. So this is actually from the 2425 school year going forward. And again, we worked with the NTU to make sure that no former teacher would be negatively impacted. So there was a handful of teachers that we adjusted this year with the union. And I think we're in a good place.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the MOU, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And last is to make a recommendation to approve the NTU Unity Food Service Collective Agreement for 2024 through 2027.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Has, I'm sorry, has this gone to the food service for ratification already? Or do they wait till after we do it?
They've approved it already.
And I just wanted to say, I really appreciated the costing sheet.
Yes, I think going forward, we'll make sure that the costing sheet and the red line is in the hands of the board. Won't try to, a lot of times, it wasn't us that was pushing it. It was the other force that was pushing it. It was the other force that was pushing it. But I just, if I can just say a few things about this contract. You know, it does have a significant percent increase in the first year. So I'm not getting soft even though I'm leaving, okay? Uh, that was done for a reason, a couple of reasons. One, for the, for the new people, food service generates its own revenue and has expenses and comes out each year with a profit. That since I've been here, it's done it. I think prior to me being here, it's always, always done that, other than the COVID year. And that was a very odd year. But, so the funding stays within a special revenue fund. It's not like all the other costs where you have an operating budget and you lose the money, use the money or you lose it. So it rolls over year to year. But there's also some rules around it. Since most of the money that we get is from the federal government program, you can only have an average of three months expenditures in that fund, okay? We've had well more than that the last couple of years because the one year right after COVID, it was free lunch for everyone. So we received revenue and we had no costs. And we were given a lot of food. We had a short staff. So there were a number of different things that led us to where we had over two million dollars in this account. So we've been trying to spend that down. Some of the things that we talked about earlier about Main Dunstable and Birch Hill, buying better equipment, replacing it now that we have the funds to do that. The other thing, we've been down since COVID about twenty to twenty-four food service assistants. So it's been really hard to find those people. We've, in this latest contract, they were, we're hiring around thirteen seventy-five or so. Everywhere else in food service and Dunkin' Donuts and the fast food joints and everything, if you don't get to fifteen, no one even comes to talk to you. So what this does, it gives us a one-year bump up. It gets us to over fifteen dollars an hour for that position. I think it's fifteen thirty. And then at the end of the three-year contract, it's sixteen forty or so. So it, it will get people in the door so that we can interview, speaking with the food service team. They felt when they could get people to sit down and interview with them, they could talk about all the positives that this job has versus, let's say Burger King, for example. And so, but it was hard to get anyone in the door unless it's fifteen. So that, that was the reason for the first year. You'll notice the, the couple of years after that are more in line with other contracts have. So, um, and, and like I told the director, I said, look, Dahlia, you can hire as many people as you can. If these rates get a little high for you, maybe you don't have to hire all twenty open positions. You can hire sixteen of them and then continue to, cause you want to continue to make money, but you don't want to have to raise the cost to students unless you absolutely have to. That's the other thing you can always do. So I think it's a, it's a much higher contract than I've ever been involved with since I've been here. But it is, it's a different group. It's not all taxpayer money. It's not, um, and, and the funding was there, buying equipment and spending more money. I think we'll get more people in the door and we'll continue to have. I think we have a very good program and I think we'll continue to have a strong one. Other than that, there's not too many other changes to the contract, mostly word changes. If anyone has any other questions, let me know.
Ms. Raymond?
Just curious, these are all typically part-time, like four or five hours a day positions?
Yes, the food service assistants typically four to five. The cooks work a little longer than that.
I mean, I'm always, I think we should pay people so they can live in the community where they work, so.
Being no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving the NTU Food Service Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement for twenty-four to twenty-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any liaison reports? No, so we actually, I do, I'm, we have a thing with the Ed Council. Can you speak to that? They, they, they want to put together a committee to review the outcomes of the changes at the middle school level. So they've put a couple of people from their union on this board and they want somebody from the school board to be on it. Shewanda and I talked about this a little bit the other day because a lot of the questions that she's had for me lately go right into what this, what this committee wants to review. So does the six versus the seven period day actually make any difference to the students? The leveling, does that actually shift any positive outcomes for the students? Just to see what the changes that we've made, if there are positive outcomes to it, to research that. So talked with Ms. Daniels-Williams. She is interested in doing this, but I wanted to open this up to everybody to see if there was anybody else who wanted to work on this joint collaborative committee. Ms. Raymond?
Is this a new ad hoc committee or is this to replace the Ed Council?
No, this is in addition to.
We need a motion to create.
They already did it in the Ed Council, so we just have to put somebody on.
Well, the Ed Council is not, it's like one person from the board and three teachers. It's not a, like, do you know what I mean? So my question is, if we have a board member doing it, do we need to like label it or call it a task force or something else? And will it be subject to the right to know? But, don't get me wrong. I think that we should review it. I don't have any personal feelings about whether or not it should be at the curriculum committee, if it should be an internal, you know, middle school steering committee or union committee. I don't really have a preference. I think it's a good idea to be checking periodically through the year next year. And then at the end of the year, have some sort of report so that we have informed practice. I just want to make sure that we don't like trample on state law by accident.
And on first blush, I think it's very similar to the Ed Council. I think there should be a liaison report. So those agendas aren't posted, the meetings, like minutes aren't posted again, um, like on the BOE website, but I think there should be a liaison. So we can further research and work with the NTU on some of that as well with the intent. But it is really about reviewing practices and policies and the impact, which again, something we should be doing anyway. So fully in favor of doing this collaboratively.
And I'd fully support Ms. Daniels-Williams if she wants to be the volunteer person to do that. Like, that's fantastic.
Yeah. I'm just trying, I'm pulling up the email, but it's a Word document that's in Microsoft and I don't have the time right now to sign into that account. So, um, we'll get back to if we need to make any formal motion about it, but I think it's just kind of a work, a working group that we're there for. So I'll have Gary get ahold of you in regards to when the meetings will be. And then we can start adding them into liaison reports. Well, we do the Ed Council liaison reports anyway, but we'll figure out a process. Yeah. Come on down if you want. Yeah.
On the list anyways.
Yes. That's exactly what I was trying to pull up. Is the microphone on?
I know, talking to it and let's find out.
Hello. But it's also too high for me because I'm short. Okay, so Heather, you're.
Say your name for the record.
Oh, Stephanie Keating-Baird. I'm a teacher at Fairgrounds Middle School. I live at One Hampshire Drive in Nashua. And I'm a member-at-large in the Executive Board of the Union, of the National Teachers Union. So I can speak to that question you had about the Ed Council, uh, Ed Council proposal. It is contractual. There's a certain amount of money set aside to form these committees to investigate procedures and policies and programs that come up. And so I think that Mr. Hoffman wanted to take advantage of that and made a motion at the last Ed Council meeting that we look at some of these changes that are happening for the middle school. And, um, I guess that's going to be me.
So it's not, it's not really a board committee then? Ed Council isn't a board committee either. It's a union contract committee where they've invited a board member to, right, sit in.
Technically, there should be two, according to the contract.
Oh, we need two.
Well, it's me and Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I'm just out of the loop. I don't know what's going on.
So that's that.
So does the con, the contract doesn't, does the contract require any particular number of board of ed members for like subcommittees that you guys create or no?
I don't think so.
Alright.
I think it's pretty vague.
Well, I think it's a great idea, so.
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have to figure out how we're going to measure the results and it's going to be complicated, I think.
Yeah.
To get true data. So the reason that I'm here tonight is Mr. Hoffman was not available to come, but he wanted me to ask you about final numbers for the middle school classrooms. Apparent, you know, in March, we were told that we would have as close to those numbers as we could get because we were presented with, you know, the differing numbers in classes at each of the middle schools. And Fairgrounds was pretty high and Penachuck was high, but they were going to have three teams per level. Fairgrounds, we were talking about two and a half teams per level because of the class sizes. Now technically, according to the contract, middle school teachers can have thirty-one students in each class, but I don't think you want thirty-one students in each class. And you certainly don't want thirty, thirty-one students in classes at Fairgrounds Middle School and twenty kids in a class at McCarthy or Penachuck. That's really not equal, right? So last month, we didn't get any figures. We're speaking with Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska earlier. And hopefully those numbers will be out next week. More, more realistic numbers next week, right?
So if I may, um, again, the RNA, Mr. Poska and I actually met this morning to go over some of the numbers. So two weeks ago, we've received numbers from, uh, from our data analysts and the numbers rolling up from fifth grade to sixth grade and then looking at the boundaries. And the numbers looked different mid-June than they looked what we presented in, um, back in the winter, like it seems like eons ago.
Or in what month?
Right, and so we, and then we reviewed the numbers again this morning and they are differing. So to a point where like even at Penachuck, there's only like a thirty, uh, student difference right now between Penachuck and Fairgrounds or McCarthy. So, um.
Thirty per, per grade?
Um, so like right now, not, not per grade. So Penachuck right now is close to six seventy, right? As opposed to over the seven hundred that we were projecting. And then McCarthy and Fairgrounds are around like six forty-ish, you know? So the notes, but that's one. But we're still getting that fifth, sixth grade students who are disenrolling, going to charter schools. So we're still tracking a lot of that information. We do have a meeting with the middle school principals on July eighth because they have scheduled in the buildings and that's kind of the most real number. So we'll have better numbers on July eighth, um, so we get some of those decisions. So there still looks like there's a decrease in some of our numbers and projections for next year than actually what we were looking at in, um, back in the spring, so.
Yeah. Well, I guess what we're concerned about is the number of teams at each grade level at each of the middle schools because Fairgrounds has two teams at each grade level. So that means significantly higher per-class numbers than three teams at Penachuck at each grade level with ten more students.
So we are looking at that.
So that's, you know, so we're just worried, we're concerned about that because it's a lot of change for stu, for, for teachers this year with hetero, the move to heterogeneous grouping, the, um, push-in for special education, you know, um, and larger class sizes for the six-period day. So, so it's a lot of change. So I know that Mr. Hoffman was concerned about that. So, so I'm here to say that we're concerned about that.
Yeah.
Okay?
I'm excited to see what you guys pick for measurements and how you're gonna.
You and me both.
Like, it's almost like a research study, how you guys are going to set up what you're doing seems fascinating to me, so.
Right.
If you ever can't make it in there, I'll, I'll jump in and join. So I'm excited to see how this all plays out.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this brings us up to second public comment. Is that it? Right, we're done? Yeah, you know. Oh, I needed to formally say it now, but Ms. Keating needed to come down and explain to us better than what I did in regards to what this committee was going to be. So I appreciate you speaking better than I do. Okay, so, oh, just one, Ms. Oden. Welcome back. Three minutes.
Thank you. It's past my bedtime. I am, I'm here because Dan Donovan is leaving. And, um, working with Dan, oh, let me see, for years. It's been a pleasure. I wrote something out, now I'll, I'll read some of it. In two thousand, in a two thousand eight article in the New Hampshire Business Review, there was an article on the Nashua School District. It stated, "Over more than three decades, the leadership of the city's school system changed once in thirty years." Dr. Massey retired after twenty-two years and was followed by Associate Assistant Superintendent Joe Giuliano, who served as superintendent the next ten years until his retirement. And I was there for both of them. One of the first hires made by Superintendent Giuliano was a new business administrator named Mark Conrad. Nashua had some very rocky years at central office after Superintendent Giuliano's retirement. I, I guess I use the word rocky because I can't describe it any other way. From two thousand six to two thousand nine, there was a daily paper in Nashua and I think probably the school district or people from the school district were on the front page most of the time. So rocky years at central office, I think describes that pretty well after Joe Giuliano's retirement. Mr. Conrad, Mark Conrad, left in two thousand six, but returned as superintendent in two thousand nine. One of Superintendent Conrad's first hires was a new business administrator, Dan Donovan. Probably one of the best hires Mark Conrad made. In Nashua, they really didn't have any time to get their feet on the ground as a two-million-dollar deficit was left to Mark Conrad and Dan Donovan. I was teaching at that time and know from the vantage point that, um, Mark and Dan worked very hard. And quite frankly, there was little negative effect in the schools and on our students. And that is a, a testament to how competent and how caring you were about the students. Dan, I know how hard you've worked to keep the money flowing in the right direction here in Nashua. I've sat with you in negotiations when you were put in the position to determine if we could afford a particular number when looking at the cost of contract. I've spent time with you in budget meetings and finance committee meetings. And if you didn't have the answer to a question, you would say, "I'll get back to you." And that's what you always did. You were always respectful, listened carefully and kept the best interest. You were always respectful, listened carefully, and kept the best interest of our district at the top of your list. I thank you, and please know that all your hard work has been appreciated by many. Have a wonderful retirement, enjoy some extra time with the family, and I have a little something to give you, to remind you of these days. Dan, you are worth your weight in gold. Dan, you are leaving big shoes to fill. Now, I tried to find a size 15 or 16 shoe. I couldn't. Well, I did, I did see a pair, but it was $25. I thank the world of you, Dan, but I know you wouldn't appreciate that, so. I think these are a 13, but you're leaving big shoes to fill, and you have done a tremendous amount for our district, and thank you.
That's it for public comment. And I, I think we all share Ms. Oden's sentiments, Dan, that we are extremely happy for you that you're retiring, but very, very sad for us, so. Thank you for all you've done.
Well, I did count up how many board meetings I've been to since I started. I'm only kidding.
That brings us up to board member comments. We'll start over on this side tonight, Mr. Johnson.
No comment tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Prynne?
Donovan, I feel like I've just gotten to know you, and now you're leaving, but that's all I have to say. I really hope you enjoy your retirement.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I want to thank Mr. Donovan for taking the time to explain some things to me, so I, I'm very thankful. Thank you for everything that you've done for the district. Thank you.
Claffey?
I'd better not.
Ms. Gilio?
In addition to everything that Dan has done for the district, I want to thank him for what he did for me. The first year that I was on the board, which was almost five years ago, I had the pleasure of working on two contract negotiations with Dan. I had absolutely no idea what I was doing, and he took me under his wing, and through his guidance, I understood the problem, and now I'm looking forward to contract negotiations. And I wanted to thank him for that because that echoes with me. And thank you for everything you've done for our students and our staff.
Congratulations to Mr. Donovan, obviously, but I also have a couple of community announcements. There are a couple of programs in Nashua for making sure that kids get enough to eat while the schools are closed. The first one is kind of a private Soul Sisters, Soul Sistas catering raises money, and she takes her food truck out and she feeds kids until she's out of dinners. And so if anybody needs food, she's amazing, and if anybody wants to donate, she's always taking donations. The other one is our citywide partnership with the Soup Kitchen and Shelter. There are breakfasts and dinners available at, I'm sorry, there are lunches available at Dr. Crisp, at Major Drive, at the First Church, at Elm Street Middle School, and at the Soup Kitchen and Shelter. And lastly, the library has started their summer reading program again, and it's for kids really much K through whatever. And this year, they're doing a thing where if kids read 800,000 minutes collectively across the city, and we know that we have at least 10,000 kids to meet there, they will donate $500 to the Gate City Bike Co-op, who refurbish bicycles for kids who need bicycles. So, I mean, just community helping community, so. All of that is on various websites, including Meals is on our website.
Mr. Donovan, we're going to miss you very much. You're probably the only person I've, I've gone head-to-head bantering with and come out feeling educated and not stupid, and I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to let you all know, I had a little giggle today while driving through the community. I passed bicentennial school, and the sign-out front says, "Dear middle schools, we tried." Both of my kids were dying. They thought it was hysterical, so thank you, bicentennial, whoever came up with it. That was a great idea, and it made my day.
Ms. Lamphier?
Well, thanks, Mr. Donovan, for everything, and we really will miss you. But I feel like, I feel like Crystal's been under your wing for a little while, and I think she's going to bring a little bit of your spirit to our meetings going forward. So anyway, enjoy your retirement. Thanks.
Hey. And with that, we are not adjourning this meeting. We have to go into a non-public. Yep.
What's the number?
I've watched you guys packing up, and I was like, you're going to be so mad at me in five seconds. It's, can I look?
No, sorry. Can we have a five-minute recess?
We'll go into non-public, and then we'll take.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So I need to go into non-public under, yep, negotiation. So looking to go into non-public under RSA 91A32E.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call. I'll do it. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Prynne?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop says yes. So we are now in non-public at 8:20. We'll take a quick, a tight five. I've been listening to Smartless. What, your mayor's had a question? Oh, sorry.
Is there going to be anything after the non-public, or no?
Nope, we've wrapped it all up. Everybody can head on.